Okay, Bola, leave our aldermen alone. Yeah?
Yeah.
Did you not receive the survey? Did you not realize that your number said they didn't want more of them?
I'm believing that's right. You know, I'm... All right, it's called to order the June 17th Board of Aldermen meeting. Would everyone please rise with me for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Shelley.
Mayor Dimmitt.
Here.
Alderman Leahy.
Here.
Alderman Kramer.
President.
Alderman Lockmuller.
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Here.
Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderwoman Tice.
Here.
And Alderman Weggie.
Here.
Thank you, Shelley. Next item on the agenda is approval or amendment of the agenda. The Chair has one change, and that is item 13. I'd like to also add a third reason, and that would be, to go into closed session, that would be employment pursuant to 610.0213.
Second to motion.
All right. Anyone else have any other changes?
No.
Any objection to approving that by acclamation as amended? All right, then it will be approved. Next item on the agenda is item 5, public hearings. We just have one, and that is case 1911, a public hearing to consider amendment of a conditional use permit and site plan review to amend the CUP for Brentwood Promenade to allow a second bank and office space for property zone PD Plan Development Overlay District and located at 5 Brentwood Promenade Court. And with that, I will open public hearing for case number 1911. Anybody in the public or in the audience care to address the board on that case? Now is the time to do so. We will close public hearing for case number 19-11. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Anybody in the audience care to address the board? Come on down, and you will be given three minutes. Sherri Holderback.
My name is Sherri Holderback. I live at 8914 Lawn Avenue. And I think the last time Alderman was before...
Yeah.
...the commission because I came up and spoke at a meeting. That'll learn already. So, anyway, I'm excited to be here tonight. I have the privilege to be on the commission and hear actually all of the testimony in favor of Obie Clark when that development first went in many years ago. Recently, as you may all be aware, hashtag LTV, the Blues won the Stanley Cup. And they got off the airplane and they showed up at Obie Clark's. And I want to commend Obie Clark and I want to commend our police department. They did an amazing and incredible job. Obie Clark's been such an upstanding corporate citizen. And Mr. O'Brien, I wish he would have been around to see the Blues win. But Jimmy and Joe, they run a tight ship there. I live up the street, and I never hear a peep out of that place. Everybody that goes there is absolutely amazing and quiet. And we had a fabulous party, an amazing community celebration. Everybody was safe, everybody was well behaved. I lived on the street, and I would watch people come and go and become moderates. And all the citizens that were coming or walking there to Obie Clark's to celebrate, it was just absolutely incredible. And I want to commend our citizens. I want to commend the O'Briens for how they handled that. They never understood what times when people were being quiet, even though I could hear some cheering from my house, especially if I went on the front porch. I mean, it was just well under control and well behaved. There was a potential for traffic issues. They handled that just impeccably well. Our police department was really good to help out with that to make... And I hope it happens many, many more times. But I just want to thank Obie Clark and thank our police department in our city for allowing this to happen and making it a safe...
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you, Sherri. You can expect a call from me appointing you to a committee now.
Two committees.
Anyone else in the public care to address the Board of Aldermen? Stu, come on down.
My name's Stu Clark. I live on St. Clair Avenue. And I also want to say what Sherri said, and that is, Obie Clark is the greatest sports bar in America, and the police did a great job. And I would like to volunteer for that committee for next year when we win the cup. And I would hope the Board of Aldermen would go ahead and like pre-issue a key to the city and give it to the mayor so that he can get into the party. And I'd like to thank the mayor for coming out to that, and welcome everybody.
Thank you, Stu. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is item 7, Mayor and Aldermen Reports. My report, the only thing that I have is reappointment and appointment, few positions. The first is Planning and Zoning Commission. There are two commissioners whose terms expire in 2019, and we need to... I've spoken with both of them, that's Tom Shipley and Hart Nelson, and they both have readily agreed to serve another three years on the P&amp;Z Commission. And I think we're very fortunate to have those two on there along with all the others that we have. They do a tremendous job, as Alderman Plufka can speak to, having served on it, and Alderman Kramer, and anybody else who's done that, they understand how much time is involved in the commitment and the responsibility. So, Bola, do I need to do these individually? Can we do these all as a group with the exception for the appointment? Okay. And then the next one is the Architectural Review Board. And that is Carl... Thank you.
Carl.
Carl Carlin, thank you. And I did speak with Carl also on Friday, and he also has agreed to re-up and serve on the Architectural Review Board. So with that, the Chair would entertain a motion to reappoint Carl Carlin to the Architectural Review Board, Hart Nelson and Tom Shipley to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Yes?
I thought you wanted to do these all at once.
I am, but not the appointment.
Okay, so the Library Board you're going to handle separately?
Correct.
Very good.
Since that's not a reappointment.
I just wanted to say that since both Tom and Hart are no longer trustees in New York, they need something to do, so...
All right, so we have the motion to appoint made by Alderman... Who was it that made it?
I seconded.
I firsted.
Okay, so do we have that, Shelley? Okay, so we have the motion, and we have the second for the reappointment of those three individuals. Any discussion on that? Okay, we can just do a voice vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, everybody. And on the next item is the appointment of someone to the Library Board. And that is Kathy Ryan. I know the board has had an opportunity to review Kathy Ryan's CV and letter, but the public may not, so I would like to take this time just to read her letter to the city expressing her interest in serving. "To the Director and President of the Brentwood Library Board, Ray, serving on the Board of Trustees. I would like to express my interest in serving on the Brentwood Public Library Board of Trustees. I welcome the chance to discuss this opportunity and how my background and interests might support the library's mission. I am a native of St. Louis after a brief stint following my birth in an Air Force Hospital in California. I grew up in Ferguson, spending hours and hours studying and talking to cute boys in the library on Church Street, mostly studying, of course. My favorite youngster series was The Happy Hollisters. Eventually, I moved on to Rebecca, One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, and Catch-22. From simple beginnings, reading developed as a constant pursuit throughout my life, both personally and professionally. As a first-generation college student, I stayed close to home, completing a degree in education at the University of Missouri-St. Louis. Over the span of my career, I taught children needing a special education, children needing reading support, and perseverance pre-service teachers and speech and language pathologists at the university level. In the last third of my teaching career, I served as an administrator, language arts curriculum coordinator for a K-12 district. It was a dream job, working with 800 teachers to meet the instructional and curricular needs of kindergarten through high school children in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And now, after moving to Brentwood five years ago, I'm retired with time to play with my grandchildren, also residents of Brentwood. This means trips to the library for art projects, book club, toddler yoga, and storytelling. I love reading and believe it is crucial role in developing knowledge and empathy through books and the discussions we have about them. I would be thrilled to act as a trustee for the Brentwood Library if I can be of service. Thank you, Kathy Ryan." With that, the Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Kathy Ryan to the Library Board.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to appoint and a second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a vote on that. All in favor of appointing Kathy Ryan to the Brentwood Library Board, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Kathy. Next on the agenda, that's it for the Mayor's Reports. Alderman Kramer.
No report, Your Honor.
Alderman Leahy.
Thank you, sir. The Ward Three meeting for the month of June will be Tuesday night, June 25th, at the Brentwood Rec Center at 7:00 PM. It's an informal gathering with the aldermen from Ward Three, where happy to discuss anything of interest by the residents. All are invited. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Leahy. Alderman Lockmuller.
Next Public Works Committee meeting will be Thursday, July 11th, at our new time of 6:00 o'clock right here. Brentwood Sentry Foundation update, they were to have a vintage baseball game, but that was rained out Thursday, so it will be rescheduled. Check Brentwood.org for the new date and time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yes, a couple items. Ward Four's meeting will be Tuesday, the 25th, at 6:30 in the clubhouse, and we will have the whole clubhouse. There will not be a Board of Managers meeting, so lots of time to talk to people. As library liaison, I regret to announce that Hillary Gans has resigned. She has done a lot of the programming that has been expanding the adult possibilities for things there, so we are very sad to see her go, and the position will be posted.
Thank you. Alderman Plufka.
No report.
Alderwoman Sims.
The July meeting for Ways and Means will be rescheduled because the first Thursday of the month is the Fourth of July. Date unspecified as of yet, but certainly before the next July meeting. Alderman meeting, that is.
Alderwoman Tice.
No report.
And Alderman Weggie.
No report.
Thank you. Item 8, City Administrator's Report. Bola.
Thank you, Mayor Dimmitt. I wanted to go back to, under the Mayor's Report, we have vacancies on the Architecture Review Board and are accepting, I guess, resumes, interests, applications. So I just wanted to put that out there.
It's a call-out.
Yes, a call-out.
We need people.
Yes, absolutely.
And isn't, aren't we looking at maybe making a change to the city code to deal with that?
Absolutely, we are doing that too, Lisa, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, we're looking at maybe coming up a way to expand the pool of participants. You want to come on down and tell us real quick as part of the Mayor's supplemental report?
Sure. ARB is a very specialized committee, and the way it's currently, the composition of the ARB, the way it's spelled out in our existing code is that you have to be a registered architect and you have to be a resident of Brentwood. So there are Brentwood residents that are architects, but the composition of the ARB is that we have four regular members and then two alternate members. So to find, you know, six people, that's sometimes is a small pool. So I think that, to your point, is what we're looking at, is how could we possibly expand and change that section of the code to expand to other disciplines that are still related to architecture, but maybe expand it out to landscape architecture, possibly even engineering, things of that nature. So that will be coming back to you at a future date.
Now, will that be coming through Planning and Zoning, through Public Works, or straight to this board?
It will go through your committee. It will not need to go through... Well, I got to take that back. The actual ordinance change would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I think we would be looking to take at least the staff's recommendation to the committee and kind of, again, see what the committee thinks, but then the actual ordinance is if it's prepared to change something in the zoning code, which is where the ARB composition is currently in the code, then you're correct about that. Yeah, we'd go to P&amp;Z review, public hearing, and then come to the board for a final vote.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thanks, Bola.
Thank you. Craig Schluter.
Good evening. Craig Schluter with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood bound update for tonight. Starting off with investment costs, recent investment costs include the acquisition of the West Properties that will be closing this Wednesday, June 20th. Total spent to date is $7,583,202.50. Next is direct project costs. Recent direct project costs include the Deer Creek flood mitigation design and engineering, Manchester Road improvements, design and engineering, and the property appraisal. Total spent to date is $2,798,316.54. Lastly, indirect costs. Recent indirect costs include property acquisition legal fees, property acquisition commissioner fees, and project management services. Total spent to date is $1,417,749.49.
Thank you, Craig. Anybody have any questions for Craig? Yes, Alderman Weggie.
See, Phil's here. Is there a clomer update? Is it clomer in time?
No, Jacobs has been working on some minor comments, and we're hoping that there's going to be approval by end of June, but we can get more into details tomorrow night, if that's okay, but we do not have an approval as of tonight.
Okay. Shoot.
Anybody else?
Tried.
No question. Okay, thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Anything else? Bola?
No, thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and we have on that agenda the Standing Committee Reports, the minutes of both the May 6th and the May 20th meeting, the warrant list for both the operating funds and the 2019 expenditures from the 2018 Certificates of Participation, the 8750 Manchester Road Community Improvement District approving 2019 Board of Directors, Resolution Number 1149, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Brentwood and PGAV planners regarding updating the City of Brentwood existing zoning map, annual liquor license renewal, and finally, Resolution Number 1150, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Brentwood and Donaldson Construction Company for sealant application on city streets. Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion on that? Yes, Alderman Leahy.
If I may, under the Manchester Road CID District, could we get a financial statement as to where that district currently stands and what that generation is each year that's paying down, so that we can kind of find out financially where that is? I have no problem with approving the board members for the thing, but the dollars are more interesting.
It's likely that we have it, so we'll send it out to the board.
Thank you.
Alderman Lockmuller.
Maybe I'll ask a question of Lisa, our Planning and Development Director.
Okay. Lisa, would you mind?
Lisa, on the rezoning map, will that, the scope of that work also include with the purchase of that Webster property, the boundary lines of Brentwood?
Not at this time. I think we do need to go back and rezone the properties we basically swapped with Webster grows and rezone that first before it could actually be placed on the official zoning map. Since it hasn't been done, I'm not quite sure when we would get the final zoning map done from PGAV. Certainly, if it's, you know, available at that time, it has been officially re-zoned, we could put it on the map, but I think our zoning map may get done before we get those properties rezoned.
And this would also include other properties that, for instance, that we've gone and rezoned to PD around town, not just in the corridor?
Right, it is kind of in dire need to be updated. We looked at the, that zoning map that you see on the wall, the one that's published is actually from 2007. And we had the discussion, how many rezonings has that happened since then? And I thought the number was about 20, but that's not quite right, because there has been probably about 20 petitions, but several of those are withdrawn sometime at the process. But there's probably at least nine parcels that need to be updated. Plus, as part of this, it is a zoning, they review the zoning layer, but they're also will review like all the parcel boundaries, and if there's been any changes to maybe an alley that had been vacated, or, you know, they'll use the St. Louis County parcel database, GIS database to update that zoning map. So it is, it is more than just zoning, but it does need to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
If there's any other questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's all right.
Any other questions by the, anyone on the board? For Lisa, Alderman Kramer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have, I noticed there are three petitioners for renewal that have balances due by today. Did that happen? Does it matter?
That would be for liquor license?
Yes.
I will let the city administrator...
It's all updated. That's all right. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Lisa. If the board is ready to vote on the Consent Agenda, roll call, please, Shelley.
Alderman Kramer.
Yes.
Alderman Leahy.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmuller.
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yes.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice.
Yes.
And Alderman Weggie.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Shelley. We're going to go deviate just real quickly. I just have an announcement that Bola gave me, and so I would ask for the indulgence of the board, and it's, I'm just going to read it from Bola's phone. Sadly to say, Mr. Leroy Russo passed away on Friday, June 14th. He will be laid out at Cutis and Afton Thursday, June 20th, from 4 till 8:00. And on Friday, June 21st, 2019, there will be a mass at St. Mary Magdalene in Brentwood at 10:30 and buried at Jefferson Barracks. Leroy was a longstanding resident of Brentwood, and on all the Brentwood boards, we will really miss Leroy. He did a lot for Brentwood. Thank you. Thank you, board. Okay, next up on the agenda, item 10, we have no old business, and under new business is Bill Number 6242. There's a request for both a first and second reading on Bill Number 6242. Mr. City Attorney, first reading by title only, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The first reading of Bill 6242, an ordinance amending ordinance Number 3528 and granting a conditional use permit for a second bank and office space and amending the approved site development plan for the Brentwood Promenade, formerly the Promenade at Brentwood Development specifically for property numbered 5 Brentwood Promenade Court.
Thank you. Bola, do we have a synopsis on this?
This is an ordinance amending ordinance Number 3528 and granting a conditional use permit for a second bank and office space and amending the approved site development plan for the Brentwood Promenade, formerly the Promenade at Brentwood Development specifically for property numbered 5 Brentwood Promenade Court, approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission by a vote of 6 ayes, 0 nays.
Thank you. You have a report from Lisa, you want to address this?
So this petition is for a parcel that's in the Brentwood Promenade. It is right along Eager Road there. It's the parcel that included, well, includes an existing building that used to be the Farmer Mattress Store, Mattress Farm Store. And we received a proposal from Chase Bank to use the building for a bank, and then also there would be some space that they would not need at this time, so they would rent that out for office space. When we went to review the original conditional use permit that sets out the land uses for the Brentwood Promenade, it did call out that there was one bank that was permitted, but that was to accommodate the existing bank that's there, the UMB Bank Building. So when we looked at that, we said, well, for a second bank, then, it would have to come back, and the CUP would have to be amended. Are there any changes that you would have to do for the property for the bank? They had noted that they would have an ATM, a drive-up ATM. In order to put that in, it did require changing the parking along the north property line. It's 90-degree angle, it would be switched to 45-degree angle in order to accommodate the ATM drive-through line. But other than that, really, there's not many changes proposed for the bank. So it went through Planning and Zoning Commission last week, and they approved it for a vote for 6 ayes, 0 nays to approve the bank and the office space. And we did do a traffic report on it, just to see, make sure that the traffic circulation on the property, you know, would be fine, and that there was adequate room for the stacking of the cars. So the report came back that there would really be no issues, so we didn't have anybody at the meetings come and speak in favor or opposition to it. And so as what was mentioned, though, this is before you tonight for both first and second reading of the ordinance. The only reason is that they would like to go ahead, and if it is approved, start construction this summer, and because, again, the board, we do have this summer schedule, they are just requesting for consideration of that. There is a representative here, if you have any questions for him, or I can take questions at this time as well.
Alderman Plufka.
I just wanted to make, the other bank is next to it, correct?
Correct.
Just to the west? So these would be two parcels, side by side, Chase Bank, UMB Bank?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lockmuller.
I don't know if this really pertains to that exact parcel, but the whole area of the promenade, we seem to be using roughly 300,000 square foot of leasable space in there, and I think we've kind of added quite a few other parcels, other buildings since then. I don't think that comes into bearing here, but I was wondering if maybe in the future we could kind of update. You know, for instance, Target expanded and took out a whole 30 to 60, excuse me, 60 parking spaces. I think we've had Total Wines come in, Dobbs, there was a build-out of Carter, which took parking spaces. So I was just wondering if maybe we could update the total square footage that's there. Excuse me.
Okay. Yeah, we could certainly, you know, indicate that. In fact, when they market the Brentwood Promenade, I know they have a really nice map they show of all of the existing businesses in the square footages, so... But yeah, if there would be any reason that we would need to look at the current ordinance that's on file for the development, we could look at that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yes. A year or so ago, there was a proposal to have a walking path through the parking lot from one side of the promenade to the other, and it would eliminate people wandering through the cars as much as they are. That has not had much publicity lately. Is that still in the works?
Our department hasn't been working on that as of late. I'd have to see just kind of where it is. I'm not, do you know, do you have any additional information about that?
No.
Yeah. You were speaking of just the elimination of some parking spaces, was it, to give just kind of a direct route from east to west, kind of in the middle of the development? Is that what was proposed? I do remember talking to the property manager about it. I think what I, my recollection so far is they really just don't want to give up any parking that they have. It just seems like it's at such a premium, so, but, so it could be revisited again, but unless it is private property, so unless it's something that really the property manager would support, and then in turn the owner would agree to, but...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Lisa, I do have one. So it's a 5,000 square foot building, about 4,000, I think, was going to be dedicated to the bank and 1,000 reserve for office space?
Yes.
So it, any type of signage? How does that work on both the future...
How does that work on both the future office space and the bank?
Yeah, even with the, the property or the building being divisible into two tenant spaces and so forth, the signage plan that is permitted for that building, because you've got a couple of frontages to work with, even the tenant space should be able to have some signage as well. So I think it will work out. If for some reason, the tenant, who we don't know who it is at this time, would want more, or if it'd be something that would not be allowed with the sign package for Promenade, it would have to come back.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Chair would entertain a motion for a second reading. I'm sorry?
I thought we already had that we agreed to a first and second.
I thought we just made, no. We just had the one, so I do need.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion for a second reading by Alderman Waggy and a second by Alderwoman Sims? Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
This is a vote for a second reading first.
I'm sorry, yes. Second reading by title only. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Second and final reading of Bill 6242, an ordinance amending ordinance Number 3528 and granting a conditional use permit for a second bank and office space and amending the approved site development plan for the Brentwood Promenade, formerly the Promenade at Brentwood, development specifically for property numbered 5 Brentwood Promenade Court.
Any further discussion? Now we'll do a roll call.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil? Alderman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Bill Number 6242 passes, and upon the signature of the mayor, becomes ordinance Number 4880.
Great, thank you, Shelley. Next item on the agenda is Item 12, we're back to citizen comments. Anyone in the public? Come on down, Barry.
Hello, Barry Williams, 9001 Pine Avenue. I have to echo what Sherri said earlier. It was really very exciting to see the Stanley Cup glistening right in our neighborhood, in Ward One. But the main reason I'm here today is, as, as you all know, I'm a long-timer here. When my family and I arrived in Brentwood, the city was about 40 years old. And now, holy smokes, it's 100. I don't know where those years went. But I'd like to enlist your support for something that's been bothering me for many years now in Brentwood. It, it's an injustice that needs to be addressed, I feel. And that is the fact that the Madden family, Thomas Madden and his family, who settled this community and founded it a long time ago, is not, the family's not recognized at all in this community. Nothing is named after the Maddens. God bless her, the, the late city clerk and alderwoman, Lorraine Cruisin, tried to address that injustice many years ago when she renamed Brentwood Days back to Maddenfest. But I know this body, a year or so ago, decided to reverse her idea, and we're back to Brentwood Days again. You know, as a practical matter, it, it's very difficult to rename streets. It's a great hardship for all the property owners who, in effect, are, are moving to a new street, you know, in, in terms of postal service and so forth. So I'm not recommending that we rename a street in honor of the Maddens, but I do have an idea, and that is to rename Memorial Park after the Madden family. And I've come to that idea because, to me, the, the name Memorial Park is kind of a generic ho-hum name. It doesn't have any particular significance to Brentwood, to this community. I mean, you know, every city in America has a Memorial Park, I suppose, or Memorial Plaza, or gazebo, or something or other. I think this might be the, a nice way to recognize the family that made this community possible for us, to rename Memorial Park Madden Park. And I think it would be wonderful to do it in time for the Centennial this December. And I don't know any of the Madden family for all the years that I've lived here. I don't know a single one of them, but I'm assuming and hoping there are some descendants in the area, and it would be wonderful to try to find them and have them here for the rededication of the park, if you opt to do this. You know, the, the Madden family began this community with their limestone quarry down at the Deer Creek. And Thomas Madden and his family owned everything in town at one point. They, they owned a blacksmith shop and a saloon in addition to the quarry. And I, I just find it very hard to believe that we don't have anything named after these people. Not, to my knowledge, nothing at all. And then when you decided to rename the annual festival, I thought, well, maybe in a way, this is a good thing. This kind of forces the issue. Maybe we really need to come up with a permanent solution to recognize the family. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Anyone else in the audience care to address the Board? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Leahy.
If I may respond to his request?
Sure.
There are two streets in the City of Brentwood that are named for Thomas Madden and his wife's two daughters. Hannah Lee and Match are both named after the two daughters.
Anything else? All right.
People know that for several years, I've been saying we need to get rid of Hanley Industrial Drive, number whatever it is, and put actual names to the drive. Maybe this is a time to do North Madden and South Madden, or something of the sort. It's a possibility.
Sounds like something Public Works might want to take up. You never have anything to do on your agenda.
Safety up, too.
And now the turf war begins. All right. Okay, the Chair would entertain, at this point, I guess the Chair would entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
Your Honor, I move that we go into executive session under legal and real estate, and personnel, I believe, was added under revised Missouri statutes, Chapter 610.021, subsection 1, 2, and is it 3 that pertains to personnel?
Yes.
3. And then adjourn from that executive session.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to go into executive session pursuant to 610.021, 1, 2, and 3, and seconded by Alderwoman O'Neil. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil? Alderman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.